Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. And Mr. Holt will let you be here tonight.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider the reward for Richard Sanders' nomination and the God, the invisible, the liberty in this.
Thank you. So, gentlemen, before we get started on the budget, I asked the chief to be here tonight. We do have trick or treating coming up at the end of the week. As you notice, everyone's talking on the news lately about the spike in COVID cases between Conville and Portsmouth at the different restaurants. So I know you've all read in your minutes on the emergency management task force and your meetings that they had talked about trick or treating. Asked the chief tonight to come in tonight, especially where we have a lot of folks who don't know who's into it, do more telephone, just to give a brief description of how they would like to see trick or treating proceed on Saturday afternoon from 5:00 to 7:00. And what cautions me out there, the police department will be out there and the fire department will be out there handing out glow sticks, what I read in the minutes, something of that nature, and keeping the traffic going one way. So if you don't mind, I'd like to have the chief just talk to the public.
Absolutely. Hey, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board members, for allowing me to speak tonight. As you know, so trick or treating is going to commence on Saturday, October 31st, from 5:00 to 7:00. We had the emergency management team to put together a list of, you know, guidelines for the general public, both for people that are going to give out candy and participate in that manner, and for the families that are going to go trick or treating. So for those that are participating in handing out treats, you know, some of the recommendations are only giving out candy in original wrappers. Don't hand treats out directly to visitors. If you're handing out candy outside where, you know, there's a few businesses that like to set up display or tables, and we spoke to some of those businesses directly, but it's preferable to put the candy out on a table separated in original packaging. So then that way, trick or treaters can come up and take an item, put it in their bag, and walk away. And then that way, then we can keep a little bit more space. There's, what we're trying to do is eliminate or reduce touch transfer of virus because, you know, as you know, that the touch transfer is the most common way of contracting the virus. So, um, you know, one of the things that you definitely don't want to do is the typical community candy bowl, where individuals sometimes put a bunch of candy on the front steps in the bowl. And of course, again, that goes back to touch transfers, that you have a bunch of, you know, kids out trick or treating, they're all going to be reaching in the same bowl. So we definitely want to caution people about doing that. Also, is if you have a station or a table set up, if you can provide some hand sanitizer, that that's always a good precaution as well, to have a sanitizing station nearby. And also, definitely, the use of a protective mask is definitely recommended by anybody who's handing out candy. Also, the use of rubber gloves is helpful to reduce that touch transfer. Now, for individuals that are going to participate in trick or treating, you know, some of the recommendations are is to keep the groups small, preferably trick or treat with family members or people you live with, whether you're regularly in contact with. Do not enter anybody's homes. You know, we should be trick or treating from outside the door at a distance, to avoid crowded areas. Make sure, as hard as it is when the kids get excited in their costumes, you know, we ask the adults to make sure they try to keep their kids back a little bit, so that each group has appropriate amount of time to do what they're going to do, and then back away before the next group of children come up to the building. The other thing is a recommendation of carrying some hand sanitizers with the families as well, wearing protective face covering, whether it's mask, protective mask, or an appropriate face covering that's incorporated into the costume. So we've actually gotten that call quite a bit, that question from folks, as to, you know, if Halloween masks, you know, and some serve that purpose. And then the other thing is, is also going, only going to homes that have indicated, you know, through lights or some sort of decorations, that they're participating in Halloween, and not going up to dark homes that aren't participating, because some families still, in, you know, in light of the situation we're in here, the state of emergency, some families are going to choose not to participate. And, you know, we ask that everybody respect that as well. And the other thing is, is also to let anybody know that if you see a situation where you think it might be a little bit too risky, then just use common sense and move on to another home or another location, because there's going to be plenty of areas out where people could participate. And if an area gets congested or crowded, or it just doesn't look like proper precautions are taken, then, you know, parents or adults with those groups should move on to a different one. One of the other things we just want to stress is that even though we are in a state of emergency in regards to COVID-19, we also want people to be cautious of common Halloween safety tips, too. You know, like carrying a flashlight with them, making sure that groups of young children always have an adult with them, that costumes are not, do not present a trip hazard, because we still need to be cautious of traffic and, you know, pedestrians crossing the road as well, and, you know, those normal safety concerns that we always run into on Halloween as well. So definitely very thankful that we're allowed to, you know, reiterate some of these tips and guidelines for the general public, because there's a lot to remember when we go out there this year.
Oh, yeah.
A lot more than we know. So we would like to, you know, wish everybody a happy Halloween, and I know a lot of people in the community are excited to get out and stretch their legs a little bit, just be cautious, but have a good time. So is there any other questions or anything I can answer for the board? Any other comments? Just open.
Will you put anything in the newspaper?
Yes, currently, actually, the outline I'm utilizing right now is actually posted, it has been posted for a few weeks on social media, the town's website, we have put that out.
How about the newspaper?
We didn't actually get it into the newspaper. We used mainly social media and websites, because between those two venues, it was hitting the largest audience that we found. And we have struggled with some of the newspapers on, because they're, they're printing so many stories from different local communities, that sometimes it's been hard to get it in in a timely manner, so.
In today's world, all the kids watch the media anyways.
But we have posted this visually around different areas in town as well.
Maybe. Did Kelly include it in her weekly thing in the Baysider, do you know?
I don't know if she did. I know that it was given out, but I don't know the timing when she submitted that information, if it was, if she received this in a timely manner. But we did send this out to all the department heads, and asked everybody to share it through their outlets and within their facilities.
We have to send it to the school at all.
Our school resources offices took that. If there, if you don't mind, there was one other thing about emergency management, I just, I discovered this before it came up, and I just wanted to put it out real quick, because the other thing that we're dealing with a little bit right now, too, is, well, not a little bit, quite a bit, is the drought. Just for individuals in town, who, anybody who may be suffering a water shortage or difficulties with their well going dry, the governor did approve 1.5 billion, excuse me, 1.5 million, excuse me. Yeah. Sorry about that. It's a slip of the tongue. And funding for families that do qualify for, working families for assistance with, because we, I know I've gotten a lot of questions calls about dry wells and water systems, and they're also, you know, they can help with funding sources for that, which can also help, because it's such a weight right now to get well companies out there, because they're such backlog, that they also have drinking water available, things that they can provide to families. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'll leave the paperwork up here, but anybody who's interested can go to DES's website, and there's information under the Emergency Drought Assistance Program. It's right on the cover sheet of DES's website, and I will leave some paperwork up here for the town, too, in case anybody calls in.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that.
Have a great evening. Thank you. Safe Halloween.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, moving on to approving the agenda as proposed.
Move to approve the agenda as written.
Second. Mr. Whitman, the agenda as submitted, second by Mr. McDonald. For the board, Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
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 Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Yes, both in the affirmative. Moving on to number eight, Department Budget Approval, Solid Waste, 4324, and I believe Mr. Simons is joining us by phone, if I'm not mistaken.
Liz is shaking her head yes.
Mr. Simons, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Glad you could meet us, join us tonight, sir, even underneath these circumstances that you're at home and we're here.
Yeah.
So, gentlemen, you've had the time to review Mr. Simons's budget, you heard him explain his budget. Costs have risen significantly in certain areas. He also gave us a sheet earlier, or I think I might have asked for it, where the revenues goes, these, and the stickers, construction demo, stuff, furniture, these revenues go into the general fund, 13404, and the food revenues go into the recycling, Bob, we can count that and break it down, tires, metal, wood, cardboard, mixed paper, batteries, all of that, he explained that to us before. As of 8/31/2020, so the waste has brought in $44,188 in revenues. As of 8/31/2020, recycling has brought in $58,070. As of 8/31, the recycling volume account had $463,681.90. This year's expenses to date total $48,305. To date, the recycling revenues have covered the recycling expenses. And if you remember, I had asked that some of these revenues could start offsetting the budget once it gets up to a point, Liz is going to look into that, because this is a revolving fund, so she had a chance to do that, give or not. Because hopefully, at one point, one time, maybe the recycling fund's going to take half of the budget one year. I know we save that recycling money for recycling the equipment and different things. Once it gets up to, say, around 800,000 or 600,000, maybe 200,000 will go to offset the budget one year. I don't know if that's capable of doing that or not.
I don't know about that part, but the warrant article to change the purpose of the revolving fund, the town attorney feels that it probably would be okay. The AG's office would have to approve it, because the DRA would flag it, and they would have to double check with the AG's office, because there's a section on that. I think I sent it out to everybody, actually, probably about a month ago.
You did. The only thing I'd like to see, that it would have to take a majority of the board now, not a majority, it would have to take a five to zero unanimous vote to approve the expenditures out to help offset the budget. Only because you could have a few that don't want to do it, or some that want to do it, should be unanimous decision. So that's the way I look at it. I just don't want to see that account weigh down so far, but even if it took 200,000 out, when it's at 600, you still have $400,000 to help that. But that's for another time, let's not really pretend for the budget.
They know, gentlemen, had any more questions for Mr. Simons on his budget? Summary, I had written down $462,105 in my notes, I'm trying to figure out why that's so. I'll let you, gentlemen, ask.
We added 7600. We added 7600.
Yep.
And then come out to 486,643.
Line 405.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
I had 7700. 7600.
43.
It was 76.
7600. That's what we had to add to that one.
I had 76. Mr. Simons, is there anything else that we should be apprised of since we last met?
I had 77, Bob did, too.
No, I requested 7600 to line item 405.
That's what I've got.
Yeah, we've already got that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Nope, no, that's it. That's all I got.
Now we got cut 7600 out of another line, right?
I did, I dropped it down to 4600.
So that brings that up to, what, 159,600?
Or 80.
Yeah.
Yes.
That line on.
Yeah.
And then your bottom line, Bob, is 486,643.
No, Mr. Chairman, I think we went over. Mr. Whitman?
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
All right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion then for the approved of solid waste on his budget at 486,643. Second?
Second.
Motion made by Paul Rochelle to approve the solid waste on his budget, 486,643 dollars, year 2021, second by Mr. McDonald. Second by Mr. Holt. Question? Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman? Yes, both stand firmament. Thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Simons. Have a great week.
You, too. Thank you.
Take care.
Bye.
Moving on to number two, welfare, presented by, other than the town administrator, Liz Eaton.
Yeah.
A woman in your book, you have requested $62,714 welfare.
I agree.
Mr. McDonald, you had a question about the Hyke Fund.
The Hyke Fund.
Liz can explain that tonight.
Sure. So you're talking about line 802?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Hmm?
If you go to your justification sheet.
Knows why, what it's justified for, but he wants to know why. Due to the trustees of the trust funds, why are we putting it into an operating budget, which shows that as an operating expense, you're using tax dollars to do it.
You're upping our tax rate, but yet you're taking that money out of the Hyke Fund. And I wonder why the taxpayers have to raise that money and have the tax rate go up, but yet it's in an account, and we're just going to give it back at the end of the year as surplus.
So it has to be funneled through the general fund like this, because it is a trust fund?
Why ain't we taking the $26,000 out beginning of the year and putting it in there instead of raising it by taxes?
Well, how long have you been on the board?
Quite a while.
So you've been on the board long before I started here, perhaps you could tell me why?
I've been arguing about it for years, and I think they need to take it out before some of the taxpayers don't have to come up with the money that you're taking out of a trust fund.
So there are employees involved with this, with taxes that are taken out of their paychecks, and their wages come out of this line, so we have to process it through the payroll system. We have, it's proper accounting and bookkeeping?
And that's right.
Okay.
You can still take, you've got $26,000, you take $26,000 out of the Hyke Fund and take it out of the budget, say, this is already in our budget. Instead of having the tax money, we have to raise it through our taxes.
But it's offset by the revenues that are taken out of the trust fund and then put into the general fund, if I'm not mistaken.
It's a wash. It's a wash, yeah.
It's still putting your tax rate after you wrote down.
Yes, because your revenues are coming in offset. Kind of like the water department. The water department is used by revenue, even though it's in our regular budget, we vote on it, it goes in as tax rate, it's done in, but the revenues that the water department offsets that before the tax rate is set.
Laura, is there anything you'd like to add to the, to the normal accounting procedures for, for trust funds and capital reserve funds and things of this nature?
Well, I don't believe you can just transfer one lump sum. The trustee has either spent, and you're being reimbursed, or voted on to put towards a purpose of an amount, though. I don't think it can be a random amount, because then if you have leftover, you're just turning around and moving it back. It's not as clean.
I, all right, can I throw this question out? Can the department head, such as yourself, if a bill comes in for the Hyke Fund, for employees, or for general assistance, to, I believe that was mostly set up for widowers, if I'm not mistaken?
Hyke Fund.
Or shelter in the care people.
Senior citizen.
Shelter at the house.
Senior citizen.
Can that bills be submitted to you, and then you go to the trustees of the trust funds, so these bills submitted on the Hyke Fund, we need you to pay them, they write up, they have the town treasurer write that check out of the Hyke Fund at that point?
To reimburse the town?
No, to reimburse the.
To reimburse the people?
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially not if it's payroll.
Because we do hire normally one to two people to help the shut-ins, correct?
Right.
So at that point, do they become part-time town employees?
Yes.
Which the trustees do not pay town employees, am I correct?
Right. Nor does it, the confidentiality thing might get in there, too, because welfare is kind of.
So then, when we use the money from this line item, the town goes to the trustees of the trust funds, that we need this money out.
End of the year, yeah.
And the, and the welfare clients are handled through line 801, so it's separate?
But I'm just wondering why we have to come up with it, there's tax money.
Because it's.
And then you get reimbursed at the end of the year, but our tax rate's still going up, because we got to come up with that money.
Because one thing is confidentiality, and they're town employees, it's not like we're just reimbursing vendors.
But you could still set it up, that those trustees pay them, instead of tax dollars being raised to do this.
Well, I guess the best thing to do, if you can show me otherwise through DRA in black and white, I'd let you, but right now, I'll take the word of the finance officer.
Oh, you got the choice.
And also the.
She's in that business.
You, you have a choice, you can go to DRA yourself and ask them if it can be done. That would be, that would be one way to resolve this.
And the Department of Labor weighs into this, too, and because they're considered town employees, and we have a weekly pay period, they must be paid each week, and the trustees of the trust funds don't handle the reimbursements like that every week, it's just at the end of the year. We've been in some serious trouble if the Department of Labor weighed in on that.
Look at it as that way, we almost have to go with how we're doing it.
Yes.
The way it's been being done, yes.
Like you said, it's a wash.
Yeah, yeah. And also, line 831 and 832 are reimbursed out of the Hyke Trust Fund, back to the town, as well as line 112 mileage.
You'd say it's a wash, but it's not a wash, because our tax rate is still going up on that, because we have to raise the money and then get it paid back. So it's still being added to our tax rate.
So last year, when we were reimbursed at the end of the year, money went into the general fund, which will go towards this year's tax rate. So, yes, you are a year behind, but the revenue is still coming in.
Some of it doesn't go to the tax rate.
Well, it goes in the general fund, which that helps show as revenues, to help offset some of those general funds. Like last year, you gentlemen, I believe, voted $250,000 to go towards the tax rate, which, that, some of that revenue that you used on, that came from the Hyke Fund. If you remember, we'd already reduced it, and then the majority of the board wanted to reduce it even further, so we used more of the fund balance to offset the tax rates, so some of those revenues that came in, such as the Hyke Fund, helped lower that tax rate even lower.
Hopefully, we can use the whole fund this year.
I hope not. You notice what the town of Guilford did, all their capital improvements last year, I believe, was funded by their.
Fund balance.
Fund balance, because they had not touched it for years. And so there was no tax rate. We're still lacking behind, I believe, that 7% that they requested.
We're on the lower tier. Yeah.
Hey, as soon as you get up to their tier, they're going to raise it anyways, because that's what they keep doing.
The only thing, the only thing I'll say to you, thank God, the state government and the federal government stepped in and helped out with all this PPE money, because otherwise, circles, I would have had the news this year.
Absolutely.
If we did not have that extra money, for all the overtime, the monies that had been spent. But that's one reason we try to have that fund balance up as high as we do, in case there's ever a catastrophic incident or a need of such as COVID that presented us. But thank God, the federal government put us more in debt to do it. So I, I don't, I don't know what else to say on that part, virgins. No, I know. The only thing I want to go back to is General Assistance, 801. So if Laura could tell me, if she could tell me what's been expended to date, which I know she can't, I think we had numbers up to 10,2 originally, from my last report.
Yeah, earlier this month.
Yes. I had those with me tonight.
I can tell you what it is.
Oh, that is.
So, so far, as of 10,2 expended was in that line.
$7,000?
Yep.
That's what's been expended?
Yep. As of 10,2, well, as of the end of September.
So nine months. Since January.
Yes.
So this is one thing, since I've sat here again my last four years, I've always said it could be reduced a little bit, not by a whole big chunk.
No, because we.
I'd like to see that $31,000 lowered back down to $25,000.
So I'm okay with that, if you want to do that.
Wait, is there a calendar?
She's okay with it.
That one down.
Well, this is my budget, I'm.
Quick answer, too. I'm okay with it.
Okay with it, Robin, welfare's across the hall. Yes, ma'am, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's it?
Well, no, that, tell me why you're fine with it, though. I tell you why I want it reduced. You said you're fine with it, so it's, it's the first time I've heard that, so I'd like to know why you're fine with it. So next year, I can try for another five, maybe.
Oh, no. Well, of course, the last quarter of the year, we will have a lot more welfare.
I think it's colder.
And everything, but even so, you know, it's, it's not going to over expend the line.
I'm looking at January, February, where it's cold, right in the March, it's cold, April, state cold.
Yeah.
So I'm looking what we expend, I just thought maybe we could come down. That, or, what were you at, there's the expenditure on it?
Seven.
Eight, 85, I believe she said.
Yep. $7,088.55.
Yeah, last year was 13,000 we spent.
Yeah.
So would you recommend 25, Mr. Chairman?
$5,000 less on the 804.
Which number again?
801.
801.
That would bring it down to 57,000.
Correct. It's not much of $5,000 which goes towards the cash rate, but I just can't see keeping that number high if we haven't been using over the years.
Right. If we're at seven, whereas you leave 20 in there, you should be all right.
Well, you, you want to be careful, because of the state law with welfare, you have to provide it, if they qualify, of course, even if you don't have the money, you have to provide.
Of course, there's always enough fluff in the budget, with the $8 million budget, there's always enough.
Let me put it this way, you reduced it last year, $5,000.
Yep.
Now we just took another $5,000, so reduced it $10,000 in the last two years.
You want to be cautious on this.
Yeah, that's one of those budgets that, that's a line I, who knows?
Oh, yeah.
Well, come, come next meeting after election, get a lot of people out of work.
I don't know about that.
Me neither, but I remember the last time, there's a lot out of work. So anyways, what I've been saying is, the last two years, we reduced it by 10,000, I think it was a comfortable amount. No backup from the town administrator, finance officer on it, and it's pretty good, this is the first year, she said, I can go with that. Last year, she didn't, we had to convince her otherwise.
Last year was a rough year, last winter was rough.
It's rough every year in New England, come on.
Well, it is.
Yeah, but if it was rough and you still only at 7,000.
Well, of course, that you're only seeing on the expenditure report for this calendar year, if the last quarter of last year was, yeah.
What was total last year?
13,000.
13. So you still, you still got enough.
One of.
I think staying at 25,000 is a safe bet.
Wanted to subtract 5,000.
5,000, so I'm at.
It would be 7,000.
14. 26,000, sorry.
I'm comfortable with that.
So what's the final figure again? So what's the final figure again?
Line would be fifty-seven thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars.
Fifty-seven, right.
So at a count, Mr. Chairman, you want to reduce to twenty-six?
Six thousand.
Yes, sir. Six.
Okay. You, you need a motion on that?
Motion, a second.
I'll move that we, that reduce the general assistance line eight oh one.
Sir, I don't need a line item, I just need a bottom line.
Okay, bottom line. So what would the bottom line be again?
Fifty-seven thousand seven fourteen, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's all right.
Yeah, move, we cut the bottom line, reduce the bottom line to seven thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars.
Fifty-seven thousand?
Fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars.
Yep, that's what he said, fifty-seven.
No, you said seven.
Motion is, I missed the whole to approve the welfare budget for twenty twenty-one to fifty, fifty-seven thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, uh, motion. I missed the whole, fifty-seven thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars, second by Paul Rochelle. Do I have any further discussion on this budget?
Yeah, how come we, we got all the big budgets, nobody cuts. We get to the welfare budget and we start hacking.
We look where we can in the last four years, it's shown that it's not even.
Look where we can.
Well, you can vote against it.
And actually, we did pretty good on most of the departments, most departments, we did cut some monies.
I think so.
Yeah, a little bit.
I think the departments did pretty well.
Any further discussion? Furthermore, on your discussion, you were looking to cut even more.
Hmm?
So any further discussion, I'll pull the board, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, votes in affirmative, welfare budget is approved.
Now we get to the good budget.
Why are you looking at me?
Kickcannon to him tonight, too.
Oh, yeah.
When I said no.
No.
It took candy, it took candy to make him sweeter, I ain't gonna do it, he can wait till Saturday. Administration, forty-one thirty, Liz.
Okay. So. I understand that you looked at it at the last meeting, I wasn't here.
Excuse me.
And you had a question about line one thirty-three.
ED postage.
Yeah, I had increased it to six thousand. And I did that before I had a discussion with Laura about the postage and the other departments reimbursing this line, which is now handled through a liability line in the general fund, which is just an accounting term for a separate line rather than through the administration line. So I had a document put at your seat tonight on, um, the expenditures of the postage line over the last five years. Twenty twenty is only, you know, to date last week. So this particular line, one thirty-three, I'd like to reduce it from the six thousand that I proposed, back down to the forty-five hundred, if you're willing to accept that.
Well, it makes it nice when they just come and cut their own budget.
Mm-hmm.
I saw how much.
She, she heard how much you growled at the last meeting, she was scared.
Well, I, I looked into the, you know, because it's generally over expended by at least maybe even triple the amount. But that's because all postage charges come out of this line and then it's taken from each department and put back into this line for theirs, which leaves the true administration department posted. So that's been changed now, so it's not gonna be over expended anymore. So the forty-five hundred is actually a more truer amount to cover the postage that's used by the administration department. If you go to your justification sheet, line one thirty-three, you'll see an explanation of just exactly how much that line is used and for what, you know? The AP checks, you know, any payroll due to general correspondent certified mail, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Did you use the bubble gum too?
What?
I have to use the bubble gum because you went et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So et cetera could be anything. So your bottom line will be what now, ma'am?
Laura.
So are we still reducing the board of selectmen by the two sixty as well?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I don't have that.
They re, they did not take a raise. Still cutting the total by seven. Your new line should be three seventy-five, nine forty-eight.
Nine forty-eight?
That didn't drop too much, I was hoping it was at least gonna be one thousand, was. So we can keep going. So what's the bottom line again?
Take a grand at unanticipated.
Three seventy-five, nine forty-eight.
That represents about a two and a half percent increase. Roughly.
Right, would have been three.
So I think that represents.
Do you have any questions on any other line?
What was the travel expense?
Travel, I was just gonna ask that one.
My, my was sarcastic, what was the travel expense to Hawaii? Go ahead, Paul.
Oh. Um.
Say you're just kidding a lot, so they can hear it. So I'm trying to keep it down so I don't think of the jokes.
You can hear us.
I know. Do you have a question for Paul?
So.
Uh, just the audit expense, if you could explain a little bit.
Which line?
Uh, that, I'm sorry, one sixty-one.
One fifty-one?
One sixty-one.
Okay, so that, um.
Okay, got a jump.
Every, every year we have to have an audit and every other year we have to have what's called, um, a G A S B. What is it called, a G A S B seventy-five requirement, which is about two thousand dollars. So kind of like with the election budget, depending on the number of elections, it fluctuates year after year. So twenty twenty-one is gonna be a G A S B seventy-five year, which is where I have added just a little under two thousand dollars to cover the gas because the G A S B seventy-five is a federal mandate. Um, we have no control over that, so.
Okay.
And then, and then the year after, there would be no G A S B seventy-five appropriation request for that, it would be every other year.
That's where the federal government should supply you that money to do it, it's a federal mandate.
I agree.
Our representatives would just don't do it. They go to Washington, should fight for that.
Yep.
There was a law passed at one time, any federal mandates, they'll pay for it, but they never have.
It's a valuation report, that's what that G A S B.
Thank you.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
I brought this up at the last meeting, but I just want to clarify it. Uh, the town administrators' pay increase.
Yes.
Was budgeted for five percent, I believe. Uh, when does that take effect?
So, um, that would be up to the board and it would be after August twenty-second of each year. So this particular budget for next year, um, that placeholder that's in there would be looked at after August twenty-second because I have to wait until after August twenty-second and then I have to do a self-evaluation from the previous year, August twenty-second to the next, you know, to the current year, which I'm actually working on the nineteen to twenty.
That's right.
Yeah.
Now, when August rolls around and the board approves whatever pay increase, when do you, does that go back to January one?
No.
No, this will be for the following year, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Well, if it's.
August twenty-second.
If it's approved in August, it takes effect in August.
Moving August right now, as you stated, she has to do a self-evaluation, August twenty-second. And then the board of selectmen will sit down. I understand. Evaluation, do our own evaluation, well, let me finish, do our own evaluation. Then it's up to the board of selectmen, the chairman to go and sit down, the town administrator to come in and what the board is recommending for an increase for the upcoming year. So the valuation we do this year should not see the increase till next year. That's the way it was done last year.
So when I, I hope to, within a few weeks, give you my August twenty twenty evaluation. So whatever you decide would go into effect this year, August twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Okay. By the way, I took it last year, didn't I, thought it went in January first.
Yeah, no.
Oh, it's retro.
And totally different, handled differently than the employees.
That was.
El Cola, you know, just totally contractual.
Yep, and then I, then I was wrong in that, Mr. Holt.
See, I was just a little confused how that worked.
Back to August twenty-second, once he said.
As I know, town employees, whatever's holding on at the town elections, they receive.
From January first.
Okay. Yep.
Cause I didn't remember doing a review last August.
Um, were you a selectman last August or was it this year that you became a selectman?
Oh, no, it's this year.
It was this year.
Yeah. Well, we did a review, selectman met with Ms. Dion, was it, Ms. Dion on December last year when we were.
Right, right, it was before you.
We discussed it, came out in a non-public session, went in and talked to her, what the board recommended, she accepted it. Then we came in, announced in public session.
Yeah.
Paul.
Yeah, we don't usually do it until December. By the time all the work and the budgets, everything's confusing this time of year, Mr. Chairman.
And, and the state of emergency too has really thrown, you know, some busyness into every single department, so.
She'll bring in her evaluation and then we'll go over it, follow us.
I've got this first draft created anyway, so.
Okay, I was just.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
In case you're not happy with the first draft, then write a second draft, a third draft.
No.
There's gonna be a scroll.
No, I, I, I set it aside, I, I wait a week and then I go back and look at it and change, tweak it, you know.
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen?
Make a motion, uh, we accept the, uh, administration budget four seven five nine forty-eight.
Okay.
How much? Three.
Four seventy-five?
Three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five, did I say four?
Yes, sir.
Well, with the scrap, what I just. I would like to amend that. Uh, the budget at three seven five nine forty-eight.
Second.
Motion made by Phil Whitman to approve the operating budget administrative department of three hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars for the twenty twenty year, twenty twenty-one year. That came by Mr. McDonald with it?
Yes.
Any further discussion? I'll pull the board, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Holt. Whiteworth, yes, votes in affirmative. All right, gentlemen, moving on to number two, legal, also presented by the town administrator, Liz Dion. Four one five three.
So I understand, I think you looked at it last week.
Oh, we've looked at them all, ma'am.
Yeah. Just tabled.
Questions raised. Laura really did want to get herself involved in it.
So this is one of those unfortunate budgets that depending on the amount of litigation or anything.
Virgil had a question, a concern, attorney's litigation fees and the retainer, only because all the boards seem to go to the town council and rather hire their own lawyers without going to the board of selectmen. And still has a concern over that. And I think he'd asked that question to see if he could give us an answer on that.
Yes, and I do have an answer, um.
Uh-oh.
Um, no, I'm just, I had, I had it all printed out unless I've saved it for next week's meeting, I might have done that. But, um, I, I know I did send out one email to everybody.
You didn't.
You have a fiduciary duty to provide legal counsel to a town board when needed.
I know, they should have to come in front of us.
So, or not necessarily the board, but the issue. So as has happened in the past, there have been a couple of.
No, it was our recommendation, the conservation commission came to us, asking us, we gave them permission to go out and seek separate legal counsel. I remember at the meeting, we approved that. Planning board, I believe, also wasn't there. And Mr. Cecil met with the conservation's lawyer.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes.
Boy didn't come in front of us.
No, but the.
But they have, they have rights to attorney Cecil as it is.
Right.
And we knew, I think, Mr. Cecil would be representing the planning board, um, at that time, uh, the Colchester case.
Zoning.
Colchester case.
Zoning, yeah.
There's another one, and we knew that we approved that one.
Yep, so those are the two biggies.
And we had it approved.
Um, and on the Colchester thing, um, so attorney Cecil is your attorney, but when it comes to representing two different boards, he always goes with the selectmen. And that's why another attorney had to be hired to represent the, um, is that the planning board or the zoning board?
Zoning board.
Zoning board for the Colchester.
Uphold the decision, zoning.
Yeah, and that case is done.
Yes, it is.
In New Hampshire Supreme Court, so that's done and over with. So. So does that answer your question, Virgil, about line one six six? So, um, it, it, it is true that, you know, the board or the issue of the board needing legal counsel would have to come before the board.
So you're bringing this line item, and that budget this year is the attorney litigation fees. And as you noticed last year, the town had to spend fifty-five thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars of a thirty-five thousand dollar budget. So they did increase it by ten thousand this year. Twenty twenty was, uh, budget fifty thousand and sixty, sixty thousand extra, ten thou, ten thousand dollar increase, so.
I'm hoping that maybe in a year, that could be decreased a little bit.
Perhaps, well, that.
Things are settled.
This one goes up and down.
It was just a lot in the last year.
Yeah, yeah, it was a lot.
Right now, we're looking at just under a ten percent increase in this line, in this budget.
Uh-huh. Roughly eight percent.
Yeah.
Eight and a half percent.
Gentlemen, there's no further questions. Liz on the legal, I would entertain a motion for that budget.
And Laura, thank you for your help, I was out last week.
No problem.
Oh, it was so much fun.
Yeah, I agree, I remember.
Make a motion, we approved one hundred thirty-seven five seventy-six for legal. For twenty twenty-one. For twenty twenty-one. Second.
Motion made by Ms. McDonald to approve the legal budget of one hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars for twenty twenty-one, second by Paul Rochelle. Any further discussion? Being that I'll pull the board, Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whiteworth, yes, votes in affirmative. Passes. All right, next gentleman, we're moving on to insurance. What I would like to do is approve line items on this budget till we get to the health insurance because at the end of our meeting, we do have discussion of insurance discussion, which would be the health benefits. Well, I got a finger being raised.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, this particular budget, the insurance budget, is for things like our property liability insurance, our workers' comp, those things that are required by state and federal law. The benefits budget, which is not on the agenda for approval tonight, is where the health insurance is, the dental, um, short-term disability, life insurance, the benefits for the employees. So this particular budget, the insurance budget, could be done in one, um, you know, motion if you wanted to do. It, the budget has decreased, as you can tell, by, uh, roughly sixty-five hundred seven thousand dollars from the current year to next year's proposed rate. Um, just going over it quickly, line two seventy-six, unemployment compensation insurance, that did not change at all. That stays the same. Line two seventy-seven, workers' comp insurance, that decreased by six percent. Line two seventy-eight, property liability insurance, that increased by four point two percent, as you can see in the justification sheet. And, um, you know, line two seven nine is remaining the same and same with the line, the first line, two seventy-five, remaining the same. So overall, this budget has decreased.
I mean, how they decrease some and then increase others to make up the difference.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Uh, how do they calculate workman's comp premiums?
Based on payroll?
Based on payroll?
Mm-hmm.
Well, what the, uh, payroll hasn't gone down, I don't think.
No.
No.
But we haven't had accidents. We haven't had no accidents.
Okay.
We haven't had accidents and stuff, we haven't had real claims on them.
Or not, not many, any.
No, that's got nothing to do with it.
Sure it does. Oh, yes, it does, it has a lot to do with your rates.
We have no, not workman's comp.
Oh, yes, it does.
No.
It's like I belong to an.
Had the accidents down there, we went way out.
As long as there's no claims or put anything against that, we do get a refund, kind of like your health insurance refund that you.
Like the holiday surplus?
Yeah.
Does Primex do that? They must, I think they all do it.
Yeah, I think we do whenever we have. I think we do.
With Primax, I, I know sometimes it's every other year, it's not necessarily every year, it depends on the claims and.
We have, I think we've gotten one from side been here. You can look at that.
No, we didn't.
Now, the workman's comp rates fluctuate with claims?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, they do.
So this year hasn't been too bad, but I think it was last year or the year before we were hit.
We had the claims.
Yeah.
You had two or three.
Yeah, and they were.
Okay.
One of those, the water department pays for their workman's comp separately. But that kinda went into the rate being affected by the time.
It's all like a kitty.
Yeah. Okay, okay, no, I was just curious.
Gentlemen, not being any more discussion or questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the insurance budget for the year twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion, go ahead, make a motion to approve the insurance, uh, budget twenty twenty-one for the sum, uh, two hundred eighty-nine thousand seventy-three dollars.
Second. Motion made by Paul Rochelle to approve the insurance budget of two hundred eighty-nine thousand seventy-three dollars for the year twenty twenty-one, second by Mr. Whitman. Any further discussion? Polling board, Ms. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Whitworth, yes, vote is affirmative, insurance budget is passed.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, moving on down the line, I wanna bring mine up first before I let Liz get bring, bring up the insurance. Two issues I'd like to discuss with you is church street and school street, I'd like to set up a workshop. We had the walk and the site visit on Saturday, we heard from the citizens that were over there, um, also a few of us that throwing out some things there, I'd like to sit out with Mr. Roberts. So we can get this, the RFPs written up for the engineering, so we can get this, the bids out there for the engineering aspects. So I'd like to set up a time for that. Other thing I would like to bring up is set up a time to sit down and decide what this board wants to do with either public works department or keep it as a highway department. So we can figure out what we're gonna do there, what our timeline is for getting the job posted, getting, uh, cause we also have to work on that salary line again, and there has been, right now, there will be quite a bit of a buyout. On Mr. Roberts' leave, depending how much time it chures between January and April. Uh, and then plus, if we, we bring on the new individual for that position, there will be at least a month's salary that will have to be added to that. Because Mr. Roberts be using up that salary line for four months, roughly three and a half, or three months, three months, one week. So I'd like to get two dates from you guys, gentlemen, today. I am here the whole month of October, I am not going to Missouri, so I am available during the month.
Month of October?
Month of November.
Oh, all right. I was gonna say, don't give us much time.
Could I just say one thing?
So at this time, what I'd like to do, I'm not asking for a date tonight, Monday night, when we have our regular meeting, I'd like to have a date, set two dates. Yes, Mr. Holt?
I, I just might, you know, and before we go too far with that, what's, if we went to create a public works department, like you mentioned, with a public works director, can we do that or do we have to go before the townspeople?
Oh, you can do it.
We can create.
You can create a new department.
Yep.
Well, I'm not creating a new department, I'm looking at creating a public works director.
Director.
Position, which, uh, which whatever departments will come underneath that director's position, that is, I believe by law, we can do that as the board of selectmen.
Because I've contacted a couple of the towns and they have what they call a public works department, but I.
We can word it whatever way, doesn't have to be.
Right, right.
We can word it whatever way, it's all in the word, but I believe we have the right as duly elected officials to represent town of all fiduciaries there, we can do that without going before them.
Well, my thing is, you should go in front of the people to vote, whether they voted up or down, they have the right to say yes or no.
Well, let's discuss that at the workshop.
Yeah, we can discuss that, yeah.
Uh, any of you and I talked about it, is to go out and look at other towns for what a public works director is. I did hand Liz one from the town of Guilford from two years ago when they were looking for one, um, I gave that to her last week and gave her the hard copy tonight. Since then, she has contacted the town administrator in Guilford. One is, we're similar, the same, similar the size town, we just don't have shopping centers in it, but the roadways are just as steep and windy as ours. In the comparison towns, and possibly maybe Wakefield would be another one, that's similar to the size of town, and Rose, maybe not as many roads, but as far as tax rates and stuff. But I'd like, Monday night, I'd like to be able to stop so everybody can look at their schedule for the next two weeks coming up. Mr. Roberts is on vacation, but he did say he wouldn't come in and meet with us for the school street, church street, one night, come off vacation, meet with that, cause he would like to see the, uh, personal polls and send out, get, get working with an engineer, how that should be written up, so we get that out to bid.
Yep, sooner the better.
Yeah, yeah.
So Monday night, everybody look at their calendar still, you'll bring your calendar? So at that point, I will stop, at that point, I have nothing else, so I will let, we have talked about insurance proposal that Laura had done up a proposal last week for us to review. Along with Liz. Table it for discussion. Since then, I've had the chance to talk with two departments. Share to my views, and I'm not ready to say my views are set in stone. I am self looking at establishing some sort of a five-year plan, something that's done this year, the vote of them as a policy. I understand the department heads' concerns, they met with me. I understand what their employees have a concern too. I also see what the private sector struggles with, what individuals struggle with, that work for life consequences, stuff that will contribute. Uh, the pay is roughly the same as a lot of our employees in different positions or similar positions. I'm not saying that the employee should have to pull everything out of their pocket and the town does nothing, I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is, times have changed, we have to start going to something.
And giving you more of.
Have the new rates.
She's getting on.
Laura proposed them to us. At that meeting, where we're on telephone now and Zoom, it went out there and said, oh my God, the employees are gonna have to stop paying twelve thousand dollars a year deductions, we did not say that. The board of selectmen did not say what an increase would be for the employees, but like I said, I am looking at a, myself, trying to put together a five-year plan. And I don't know if you gentlemen have looked at the insurance that Laura had proposed to us, or where you wanna go with it, or even understanding. So as tonight, I could not make a knowledgeable or financial decision for employees or the taxpayers based on the information I stored, need at least a couple more weeks to look at this, it might even be more. We don't have to make this decision until December anyways, I believe, cause that's, every year, we always vote on this budget in December, cause we never get it too late, this year's kinda early.
It is early this year, but I think that, you know, keep in mind, there's the budget committee that needs to review it, and then, um, the warrant articles that need to be created with the approved insurance budget in it, uh, benefits budget in it and everything, so. If you can get everything done in November, that would be best.
Yes, it would, I mean, after meeting with the budget committee last night, they got their hands tied anyways, cause they haven't even started discussing the budget yet. Hopefully, they will not need the department heads individually as subcommittees, I asked them not to do that this year, cause they are starting so late. Also explain that department heads have been so busy with this COVID, with all the paperwork that they've been bogged down with, trying to get funds for the town of Walt and everything, they really don't have the time to sit there now in November to try to get to meet with committees. So I've asked them not to do that this year, do what the board of selectmen did, meet with the department heads, review their budget, and they go back to approve it, bring the department heads back ends, and let them sit there in case they don't make the same recommendations they did. So it gives the department head a chance to come back and justify why they should at least go along with the selectmen recommending. So, especially where it's this late, cause the subcommittees usually start meeting in August, not November. And right now, so how do you get a quorum? I was the quorum breaker last week, I was two minutes late getting here, so I walked out, there's only three years, when they got here, I did make the quorum form, so we can have it.
So that's why we canceled.
Why?
Conservation.
Conservation, you didn't have a quorum?
Oh, because you had the quorum, fine. Well, he says, well, they gotta form their own budget, so we'll have to go.
So anyways, I've said what I had to say, I don't know what you gentlemen are looking at towards this, you just got handed new papers, Liz?
So we need to look at it.
So if, if it's all right with you, um, would you be okay if Laura reviewed it all with you and then you can take it home and think about it and re-review and everything, cause it's very detailed?
Being reviewed. Okay, page one, we're gonna go real close. Page one is your current rate. I highlighted it, this is the top, I've highlighted January one, twenty twenty.
That's for a month.
Yep, and I highlighted the plan, we have the top plan, so there's your single, your two-person, your monthly premium for the plan.
The other two plans are medico plans, those are for the retirees.
Okay, second page is the rate that we just received for the same plan. There are the new rates.
So family rate's gonna be seventeen hundred out of their check a month.
Boom, smoke.
You know, that's your monthly premium, so.
Not other employees.
Oh, oh, that's the whole.
That's the whole cost of the plan.
Okay, that's the whole cost of the.
Of the per month.
Per month, for a family plan.
Can I just?
Yeah, no, go ahead, yeah.
Gave us the paperwork from last week.
Yeah.
Looks like it's pretty much following the same thing here.
Yeah.
So Virgil's us in that, annual cost to the town for a family would be seventeen thousand six ninety-nine.
Okay.
She gave to us, town costs is seventeen thousand seventy-nine dollars, the employee costs is six hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-eight cents. That's the only thing, out of, out of twelve months now.
Right, you'll see that later.
It rates down to fifty dollars a month.
Yeah, you'll see that.
I see, I see it now on this back page, I just, yeah.
But when you say a comment like that, that it's gonna cost the employee out of their checks.
Well, that's right, right.
I, I wanna correct that because.
Yeah.
This thing sets the world on fire.
Well, no, I just seen it, and I said, that's an awful lot of money for it.
You should let her finish, you know.
But when you, when we say something like that, that thing sets that world on fire, there's five or six people listening to it, and then all of a sudden, there's thirty people listening to it, and they're all in the ones. And it just starts a snowball express.
Yes.
We just watch what we, how we put it, because.
I know, you.
I do.
I'm not holding myself, the only thing.
She's yelling at me to let her finish, and you're just.
I, I, I'm just trying to calm some things down there, what was just, what somebody might just.
The first two are just the costs, does it mean to who? That's the total package cost for everybody combined, like each person, each family is fourteen seventy-four right now, that's not to town, that's not the employee, that's the plan, plan package cost.
What we get, what we get charged by the insurance company called the premium.
So your third paper is like this, color-coded, one of my colors, hey?
Pink.
The yellow highlighted is what is recommended, that's your premium increase for the plan that we have. The orange is what health trust is recommending if you change plan, I just want you to see the difference. This one is what we currently have, this is what they're recommending, this would be our new premium, this would be if you changed their recommended plan, but right now, we're yellow. If we did nothing but sign a contract on the increase, we're yellow. Okay, does that make sense?
Yes, well, yes and no, but that's all right.
Wait, there's more colors.
I, I know, it's almost as bad as Blue Cross Blue Shield two, it's your, what I was doing.
Okay, so your first spreadsheet is, your yellow is what your current plan is. Orange is, um, with the increase in the premium, if you just sign the contract. Okay, so that's without making any change, you're just okay, the premiums went up moving forward. The green is if you increased, because there was a comment made about department heads paying the same, that would just be if you signed the contract, but made the department head pay the three point five percent like all the other full-time employees. Okay, that's what you're looking at on that page.
Bottom line.
So each one, so right now, you're paying six hundred and fifty thousand to the yellow, then if you just sign the contract, made no changes, it's gonna increase to the seven ninety-one.
Forty thousand dollar increase.
Yep, hundred and forty-one, seven fourteen to be exact, and then if you go with the green, with the, the department heads contributing to a premium, it would be the seven eighty-five, eight, eight ninety-six. Which is only a difference of five thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Okay, and so that's your first one, that's if you just signed the current contract as they have given it to us for this year.
And the yellow is definitely what it, it has been, or what it is now.
Currently have.
Currently have.
Yeah, so you can see if you go through what the employee pays per month.
Right.
What the department head pays, which is nothing, you'll see it play, um, what an employee pays for, for a plan weekly out of their paycheck, right down to what the town will pay, how many covered employees you have, it's all right there.
If we go along with that.
Yeah.
The new increase would be the orange.
Yep, if you made no change.
Made no changes.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Moving forward, next spreadsheet. Do you have a question or you just?
No, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to get ahead a little bit to review before you start saying, so I can follow you along.
Okay, so your next spreadsheet, again, yellow is current, what we have right now, then this is the health trust, so if you go back to the beginning, the one that he recommended to save the town funds, is the blueish gray, and that is with no premium adjustment, but a higher deductible for the employee.
That's where I wanna stop and ask you a question. So I'm looking at, it says five thousand, ten thousand, twelve thousand.
Yep.
It's like me going into a wholesaler or. Count fifty, twenty, what's the three deductibles?
Single, two-person, family.
Okay, that's all I wanna know.
Yeah.
Oh, so, that's a good question, so that's, the three thousands are single.
Correct, on your current plan, it's three, um, three, six, and nine.
Yep.
So a single person has a three thousand, a two-person has a six thousand, and a family has a nine thousand.
What's the town pays?
The town pays, um, seventy-five percent of, in a, in a phase, which we can go over, sure I have that information, cause you need to make that decision as well. And then the bottom, the gray one, is if you go with the newer plan with the higher deductible, and the department heads pay the three and a half percent as well.
Now, the, the gray, is that the same deductible as the blue?
Yes.
So it's five, ten, twelve?
Yep. Cause this whole plan is the five, ten, twelve, the whole sheet, except the.
Okay, and can you tell me how many family plans we have just in town?
Yeah, that's, it's right on the, um, you have seventeen family plans, so you actually have twenty, cause you have three department head family plans, seventeen and three is twenty. And you have sixteen two-person plans, and you have sixteen.
We have that on these sheets?
It's right here on the first one, on the yellow, it says that each column.
I just figured that out.
What column is from the right?
Can I look at George's column?
It tells you how many people.
That's why I was having a hard time trying to follow all the way.
Fourth column on the right?
Right here, Paul?
One, two, three, four, fifth, oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
From the right, it gives you the number of employees, one, the single. It gives you enrolled, the pack.
Enrolled, enrolled.
By going, and this is just roughly, I'm just throwing this out there, so going to a higher deductible, town will spend another forty thousand dollars on a higher deductible. Cause it comes out to about fifty-one thousand dollars right now, seventeen, just for family plan, seventeen employees, if you add another three thousand for the deductible, that's another fifty-one thousand dollars. The taxpayers have to have set aside for a deductible, correct? And you said twenty-five percent is borne by the employees.
Correct, but you don't budget for the, everybody for the high deductible, cause not everybody uses.
Not everybody uses the deductible, right, right, but all I'm saying is, we always budget for family plans though, when we're budgeting, when we hire a new employee.
For base.
Budget for a family.
To the base.
But, so I'm looking at seventeen thousand, seventeen people. But, so I'm looking at seventeen thousand, seventeen people on a family, that have family plans. Worst-case scenario, where we can't have added fifty-one thousand dollars.
Seventy-five thousand.
So hold on, you first, you don't really budget your deductible. You're budgeting your premiums. The deductible is the HRA part that you pay, which we usually put about thirty thousand dollars into the HRA account.
This is where it gets very confusing for the selectmen.
Okay.
But if you're, it's, if you look at your last total net cost town annually. By changing your deductible, you're going up to seven twenty-five instead of the six fifty. Your last column over on here, big sheet.
Right, that's because the premium income, a little bit with your new rate, because it's cheaper, but it's not.
Right, and this is what it's going to cost if you up the deductible.
No, 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 no. Our rates are going up anyways, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, no matter what.
Matter what we do.
This is what we have this year, six hundred and fifty thousand, seventy-five dollars, we have to town them all. The proposed rate, if we make no changes whatsoever, will go up to seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars, fifty-seven cents. A hundred and forty thousand dollar increase to health insurance if the town stays with same policy, changes nothing.
That's sharp, like we did before.
It has nothing to do with your deductible. It's just your premium.
These are just the premiums we're looking at, so.
Because your deductibles are done in a little different way. So like for a single plan deductible of three thousand dollars. The employee will submit his explanation of benefits to the finance office. For the first two hundred and fifty, we write him a check for that, him or her. Then the employee is responsible for the next seven hundred and fifty dollars. So does that usually go above that? Not normally, but it can. You're right. But not, it doesn't normally. Because then the town would pay the remaining two thousand dollars. It's done in a phase.
Question I would have for you at this point, in the second page, in the blue shaded.
Yeah.
That is going to the five thousand, ten thousand.
Yeah.
Out of all of that, for a deductible, what will the town budget for a deductible? If you're telling me we're only budgeting thirty thousand dollars to pay for deductibles now, because not everybody uses insurance, so you don't use the whole.
Correct.
What I'm trying to figure out is from six fifty to seven thirty, eighty, eighty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken. We go to that, you're looking at eighty thousand. How much is the town going to have, the taxpayer is going to have to set aside to meet the deductibles in a worst-case scenario?
Well, right now, we're only at seventeen thousand for this year out of the deductible. So I'd probably, from the thirty, we usually, I'd maybe go to fifty.
Isn't it usually about fifty?
I think we did thirty last year. I'd probably go to fifty. But that depends on your HRA plan as well, because you need to discuss that. Because right now, how you have it in tiers, you could change that, because we had talked about maybe doing fifty-fifty. And have the employees pay their fifty first. So it's not on the town, but that's totally up to whatever you come up with.
My, myself, and talking with Mike earlier, which I have to learn more about that, that H, HRA account. Versus a health savings account. I don't feel the employees, I feel the employees should deal directly primarily with the insurance companies, not with your office.
Yeah.
Believe any paperwork that comes up, I, I feel they should meet a deductible, HSA account, we have, we put into whatever we have, whatever the board decides. Which way I'm going, which way I'm planning. But I'm looking at an HSA account for the employees, and it goes right into a checking account on an HSA account for them to go towards deduct. They pay a little more, but it's done over a five-year period. So it's not a big hit to their pocketbook the first year, the second year. We told every employee, there's one department, it told me they, what a fabulous job they've done, all of them. All of them were turning around, and now they're all scared we're going to whack them with higher deductibles, higher costs, more copays. More money's going in to help pay for the insurance. What I'm looking at is a five-year plan that the board can set policy of how the employee contributes more, but it's not a hard impact within the first two years. It's spread out over the five years. And each year, the board follows it right through. But there's a lot of difference between HSA accounts, HRA accounts, and there's another account.
FSA.
FSA.
Which is a totally separate.
This money goes right in their, their account each year, so much. It's right, they, it's their responsibility how they use it towards the deductible, towards their medications. Like they do in the private sector.
Copay.
Copays. Nothing comes to the health, human resource office unless they're not getting anywhere with the insurance company. But as far as bills coming up and being handed, saying, well, I already paid these bills, you got to reimburse me, that should not be the town's job. That should be the employee's job. Employee's responsibility, not the job, their responsibility. It's the way it is out in the private sector. That office is busy enough as it is without having to worry about filing claims and doing reimbursements, unless there's an issue with the insurance company. But my feeling is, we, then, we need to go into a certain direction. I'm not asking them to pay fifty percent of their insurance or anything like that. I am asking to help contribute more towards the deductibles, single, double, and family. I am asking the department heads to pay more, to pay the same amount right now as the regular hourly employees are. I believe the selectmen have been fair this year in their caller and also in their merit pay, and it's up to the employees whether they get the top merit pay or not. How, while they do their job, and that depends on their department heads, how they evaluate them. But as we are going along, this Affordable Care Act and all this affordable insurance, we've been told over the years is going to be more affordable, it's not. And I know we have claims, that's why we have insurance, that's why we have health insurance for our employees. We should expect them to use it. And we're going to expect increases if we're in a pool and all of a sudden there's high claims. We can't help that. Health is health, especially in mix this COVID. And we want them to use the insurance, that's why we're paying for it, wanting to keep in good health. We also have to ask and be fair to the taxpayers, saying, okay, it's time to move up a little bit. Town hasn't moved from what they've been paying for quite a few years. But I'm asking, but I'm asking to do it in a five-year stance. So in case there's, they're asked to pay a five hundred dollar increase in the deductible a year, it averages out to a dollar sixty-five a day. If you break it down per day, a dollar sixty-five a day, and if we put into an HSA account, health savings account. Money goes right in their account, they use it towards their copays, they use it to whatever they want. But that's, that's the way I'm looking, and that's what I'm trying to plan out. So that's why I'm asking, in the next few weeks, you, you only come out and form your own plan, and I got a finger up again, I guess my time's up.
Yeah.
But to, to think about it. But to be fair to the taxpayers and to the employees. I think it's time that we have to move in a different way.
Maybe we should blow up shopping.
I just wanted to mention to you about the HSA versus the HRA, and we currently handle the HR here. Health Trust can handle the HRA instead of us here, which would be a huge help and handle much better. So you have some options with the current HRA versus going to an HSA.
The only thing I want to ask though, one of our employees picks up that phone and says, geez, you know, I just went to the doctor's office, I've been to the hospital, I got a twenty thousand dollar bill, you guys only covered two thousand, I need an answer. At the tone, you're the fifth caller in line. We'll get back to you as soon as we can. I don't want that to happen to our employees.
That's going to happen anyways, because they won't give me any answers.
I, I'm, I'm just, I don't like it we're paying. If we go with nothing, if we, if we go with something, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, I want an answer from my employees. It's just unbelievable that I, I talk to some employees, geez, I'm trying to get answers, I can't get answers, or even talk to individuals in the insurance company. You're paying these outrageous premiums. You'll want an answer. And I, I just don't want that to happen to one of our employees. They call up and say, you know, I, I thought you guys were going to take care of this five thousand dollar bill, I landed two thousand, why not? Well, we'll have to get back to you to find out why. Oh, somebody in the doctor's office coded it wrong. Well, you, the insurance man, call up and get that recoded. This shouldn't be my responsibility, because an employee had an office made a mistake. That's one of the biggest things I always hear. That happened to me before. I, I just, I want us to be able to get answers, the employees to be able to get answers if we start going that way, that's all.
Would you like her to continue explaining the forms?
Sure, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It, it just kind of gets me a little worked up.
All right, it's understandable, definitely.
Okay.
It'd be worth looking at the companies.
You got these two. Hi, this one. This is a study I did with an employee that we currently have, who makes sixteen thirty-six an hour. So you'll see the current plan, you'll see what, you know, his single plan deductible, his annual premium.
His or her.
His or her, yeah. You'll see what that person's final pay would be. So what I did, if you look at the first block. So the person makes sixteen thirty-six an hour, so he makes thirty-four thousand dollars a year, he or she. Current, if they're on a current single plan, they're going to pay two hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year for premium. They're going to pay seven hundred and fifty dollars for a deductible. That gives you their new salary, so technically, they would make fifteen eighty-eight an hour. After they paid for their own stuff. So I went through and did that. Same person with the two plan, same person with the family plan, that would end up making fourteen ninety-four an hour. So I did that with all of the changes that are on those spreadsheets as well.
Good question for you.
Yeah.
You're saying they're making thirty-four thousand dollars a year, but if you add in your single plan, which is per year is, I've got so many pieces in front of me. Single plan per year is.
Thirteen, uh, six fifty-five.
Why is that? I've got so many pages in front of me. Single plan, monthly medical rates.
Six thousand five hundred and fifty-five for an annual.
Really, they're making forty thousand dollars. Because I take it with insurance plans now when employees.
Right, I'm just saying what they're bringing home, like.
I know, but I don't look at the, I look at the full package.
Right.
That's part of the benefit package that we give to try to keep good employees.
But I consider that as part of the salary package is the benefits. So actually, the employee's making forty thousand, even though they're not taking home that six dollars.
Right, no, I'm just trying to show you what the employee would live off of. That's all. I, I understand where you're going, and I get it. But I'm just showing you like, so like on the back, if you, on your second page, if you went to like a ten percent increase with a higher deductible and all that. That same person, if they had a family plan, literally would seem like they only make twelve fifty-two an hour. That's all it was, just the difference of, as an actual employee. You know what I mean? I just wanted to show you. I get what you're saying, you should have started at forty, but they don't actually bring home that. And if they don't use that benefit, they don't get it, you know what I mean? So. So then your last page, I just put the dental out there, because I know there's no changes in the plan, but if you were looking to change, right now, you do an eighty-twenty. So the, the green would have just been if you changed the department for this one year as well. It's literally a twenty-five hundred dollar difference for the whole year. Just give you something else to make out, I guess. Any questions?
How quick they go up.
Yes.
Low value to get in, and then they just keep going up. Amazing. Probably should have stuck with the old insurance.
Then your other handout was the, Ruben, the one you wanted me to put on the table.
Yep.
Just shows you the, um, this is the claims from Health Trust, is the other packet that you had. Just shows you that the claim, the net reported, if you look at E, is eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand. That's a lot, that's why your rates are going up. But on the third page, it'll show you that, over the five years, it's really only an eight point two percent increase, because you go down and up down.
And COVID claims were only a little over eleven thousand.
Oh, Miss, I'll ask you, how much did they send us back?
Which was different from what I was informed of on Friday.
What did we, what did we just get back from the Health Trust surplus?
Thirty-three originally, what you told us ladies we were going to get.
Yeah.
Thirty-three.
That was a different amount.
That the.
Thirty-three something.
That the only check we got so far this year. And then last year, how much did we get? Seventy-something thousand.
Got one last.
Sixty-something, wasn't it?
No, that was the unanticipated municipal aid, that was different.
I don't think we got one that serious.
Given, they're giving us thirty-three back to get the deductible out of you.
Well, that would go into the general fund as a revenue.
Right, but that's, comes back on insurance, so the insurance wasn't the six fifty, it was six twenty.
Right, but you don't know that if you're going to get any back at the end.
I think it would nerd to look around for another insurance.
Yep.
Well, if we're going to do that, we should have done that in July.
We had planned on.
We've been talking about this for five years now, four years.
And on doing that in the spring, but then the state of emergency happened and.
Shut the town all down, nobody in, nobody out.
Gentlemen, you have all this in front of you that Laura has given you.
Any other?
It's a lot for you to digest.
Oh, not like going through insurance.
I would like to see you look at it. I'd like to have you tell me on Monday night how much time you need to review this to make a rational decision. Where you can put numbers together, because everything on me is all about numbers. But to see a significant increase this year, the town can't keep sustaining that increase. But yet, we don't want to lose all our employees either. All the towns and communities are facing it. I've looked at a few other communities. We have one of the better rates, better plans around for towns our size. Offering what we offer employees and along with the pay. I know people say, well, I can leave, go to this town, I get a better benefit. You might, but the premiums are going to be higher. And they don't always leave just because of, might be more pay, might be better benefits. But there's, when you leave Alton, you're going to drive forty-five minutes away, there's an added cost per year for that expense and everything else. There's other reasons folks leave. To better themselves, because it is a better job or a different job they want to learn. Unfortunately, everywhere we go today, we're always out shopping. I know I'm out shopping, I'm out shopping right now for health insurance for three, myself and two other employees at my store. And then in the plans I got here tonight, what I'm looking at is a lot easier than what I've got in the private sector. I really don't want the town to show. Well, I know that's, but I do want insurance I can use.
That's the difference, but I know.
Pay for it, but I also want to be able to use it. I don't want to have to spend, pay six thousand for insurance and also have to pay six thousand dollars before I use it.
But this is why we went out shopping the last time, was because the rates just kept climbing and climbing and climbing, so we went out shopping and changed.
I don't know if you have enough time to go out shopping at this point, or at this time of the budget.
We don't.
You could always go out and ask. You could always go out and ask, but you'd have to budget for the company you have right now. But unfortunately, I don't know if you can get out of the contract once you sign the contract.
But you also, well, all our contracts, towns are subject to getting out at any time.
Just, I don't know how this one is signed.
Yeah.
Not going to, just change, you're not going to just fix this problem in one meeting.
No, you're not. And that's why I said I want you gentlemen to look at all what you got here. Tell them Monday night how much time you need to formalize something, different ideas. Because I can't. The Lord just gave me the night, I need more time to review. But I, but I also have to see what the savings are to the town. If they're not that much savings, by going to a higher deductible, it's going to cost us more by putting more money away for a deductible. Was there a savings? And I'm looking at the family plan, because that's your largest deductible. I just know there has to be some, some consideration and concession from our employees to do this. Once the selectmen do formulate a plan though, I would like us to see us now with the department heads. Let them know what we are looking at. Let them throw some idea, and because they are our department heads. I think they all realize, as department heads, that things are changing, that they're going to have to pay a little more. I haven't heard one department saying, geez, you know, we don't want to do anything. But they're worried. And the employees are worried that it's catastrophic for them. But I, I want to know that it's not catastrophic, what I'm looking at. But I have to see for a little more of their share.
I think they all should have a say in it anyways.
Department.
Yeah, the department heads and the employees.
Well, the department heads, they're the one, they, they need to go to their employees and have their employees talk to them. But they can't put scare tactics into their employees. You can't tell them that we're doing Amagaden to the health insurance, because that's not what we're doing.
Not what's happening. No, we're just trying to make it fair across the board.
When you only get a dollar sixty-five a day, that's not much of an increase. And I have, when it comes to my expenses and numbers, I break everything down by the month, by the, by the week, and then by the day. What is my actual cost per day, and am I, am I getting this? So I know what my overheads are. Most folks don't budget that way. We probably have employees that can't do a budget. We probably have some that can't. We have some that can't live by a budget either. And unfortunately, I might wear a take, it takes the Human Resource Officer to. And unfortunately, I might wear a take, it takes the human resource officer to bring in the employees, to sit down and say, this is how possibly you and your family can, will be able to, if you do these steps. And I think that's one thing the town's never done, is help our employees sometimes figure out a budget, if they're in need, at times, or if they need help. And I think that's another thing an employer should be able to be capable of doing, I know I've done it with my employees. Especially when they've gone to buy a house, and they say, how are we gonna afford this house now, look at this mortgage payment, but, so I break their pay down and everything else, and at the end, they end up finding, ooh, we have a lot more money we've got. But, I, I just think we need, I want you gentlemen to look at it over the week, if you could, Monday night, tell me how much time you need to digest and research and everything. Talk to the other department heads, two of them came and saw me, I know where they're coming from, I hear where, they also, what I said tonight is what I told the chief. Over the weekend, I also told Mr. Robbins. So they knew somewhere where I was coming from, and no drastic changes. But I'd like to have you, you know, think about it. In the meantime, you wanna go out for insurance, I have no problem with that. Especially when you're still looking a hundred and forty thousand dollar increase.
They hit it?
Especially when they just gave you back thirty-three thousand dollars. Whether you keep that money in the trust and put it towards next year's fees, and lower the cost, I, I don't know.
Wanna make you feel good before they whack you.
They didn't make me feel, yeah. The chief had his hand up for a minute, he wanted to say something, I don't know if you'd like to allow him to, or not, it's up to you, gentlemen.
Sorry, me?
So I'm with me, felt it. Yeah. Well, chief.
I would be very grateful, I know they tried, I wanna say that, um, and I appreciate the, two seconds. Uh, the, uh, the chairman had, had pretty much explained, uh, you know, all you can ask for as far as the employees and the department heads. Um, unfortunately, I'm the only one that'd be in care right now, given the circumstances. Um, so I asked if I could sit, just a little bit, just a couple of things I would like to send you away with, from the point of view of the department heads and their employees. One of the things is, is that, you know, it's said time and time again, when we come to these meetings, first of all, anytime we have a large purchase, we go up and get three bits, we've been hit, we've been whacked on a three bit, we've been whacked on, 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 on price shopping, things of that nature. And I know that we're up against the clock right now, things of that, but a lot of what you're seeing, and what you're going, you have one option under, on one plan. That's it, it's just one plan that we're talking about, and we're talking about.
Right.
Do I, can I tell you that there's five other plans out there that are better in cost? No, I can't tell you that off the top of my head, I, I'm gonna bust.
Oh, but it's time to look.
It's a look, but I, but I think we really need to shop. Um, and I, and I do, again, appreciate the time that you folks are gonna take to, to look at things. It did, it was quite a scare after the conversation, cause it trickled through town amongst the employees, my phone rang off the hook, um, after that meeting on the fourteenth.
Not gonna be drastic.
Just, just because we wanted to get in front of it before we were going to our employees after the fact going, well, these are the changes that are already been made, and this is what happened, this is what it is. Um, but one of the other things I wanted to point out was, um, on that form, that Health Trust form you got, that last page, there is something to say, to say for that five-year average, the five-year average of premiums, and you'll. Looking at the cost, averages out to eight point two percent over five years, that's one point six a year. Um, on the good years and the downswing, you know, that doesn't directly equate back to the employees, that's a savings on the town's side of things, with the rates and portions that are being paid at the same. I know we're looking at big jumps right now, and I understand, that's hard on taxpayers, it's hard on the community, but this is, we haven't trended over five years, we haven't trended straight up, this, this is not what the town, it's this.
Yeah.
Okay, so next year could be, I, we may make, be making permanent changes to what employees, future employees are gonna be offered as part of the benefit package. Um, you know, possibly hurting our ability to retain or hire new employees, but not.
That's my work.
I'm gonna hear that up and down, I will say that, um, one of the comes, I just wanted to make sure, cause I was under the wrong impression too, when we were looking at this, the claims being paid through is pre-COVID, there are no COVID expenses into this. This is, because I noticed that, I didn't realize it, but it ends at two twenty-nine twenty, and the state of emergency went into effect in March twenty twenty. And I was just assuming it was straight through the year, um, and I didn't realize that upfront, um, but also, um, you know, we had some, um, there was a few employees, one of mine in particular, we won't mention any names, but obviously, um, came to me and, and mentioned about some catastrophic incidences that were, that the insurance company had, had to pay for. Um, you know, I had an employee that had a problem with, um, his new mortgage.
Right.
And it was brought to the board, and the board just said that, but that one bill alone was almost a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in claims. But that's not an every, every year occurrence, it's not something like that.
No, and thank God we had the insurance.
And, and I promise you, it would take up a lot of big time, we're going to wrap this up, because I don't wanna wear out my welcome, and not let, you guys not let me speak anymore, um.
You could've waited to say that.
My man.
Maybe during something. But, um, you know, the last thing is, and I know it was mentioned quite a few times about, um, researching and looking at everything, but you know, in the meeting, meeting last December, and COVID and state of emergency, everything's played into everything this year, I understand.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but, before, uh, we left last year, at the end of the year, one of the very last meetings on the sixteenth, it was put into the minutes, and the board had decided they were gonna form a committee, and the committee was gonna have department heads, employees, things like that. When we left, meaning when I say we, collectively, the employees, when, when they left, um, felt very good about having that, that voice, that opportunity.
Everybody had a voice.
We weren't able to be able to do that, and, um, we'll hope that maybe there's a way that, um, we can work towards that, you know, next year. I know it's not something that's gonna happen by the end of November, um, so that's something that's gonna play into everything, but.
No, and that way, everybody gets a voice into it, so, set it up.
So, just some things to think about, boys, you guys are going back, I'm gonna get you the paperwork, uh, a lot of paperwork, very thorough paperwork, um, so, um, but thank you again very much for giving me the opportunity to speak for a few minutes.
Thank you too, have a fabulous night.
Good night.
Do you have anything else?
No, no, I just have to speak with Virgil after.
All right, gentleman on entertainer motion to adjourn at seven thirty-eight.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. To adjourn at seven thirty-eight, second by Mr. Whitman. Discuss, I'll call the board, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt? Yes, Quimber? Yes, both affirmative.
Thank you.